Public comment. So we will move on to the consent agenda. The items under the consent agenda were the meetings of our meeting from October 6th, the financial reports and the MCRP staff reports. Is there any items that need to come off the consent agenda? If not, I take a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Okay. All those who favor this, if I'm saying aye. All those opposed, same sign. We're now on to our regular agenda. We don't have any items from the consent agenda. So we're on to the meat of the meeting today, which is the approval of the proposed overall work plan for 2026. Great.
Good. Thank you so much too. And I recognize, I guess, Mr. Olsen, also on the call.
Oh, Carl.
Is that right?
Yes.
That is correct. Hello.
Okay, great, everybody. Yeah, thank you, thank you. This is essentially our budget work program, our budget document for FY26. And I think all of you, they know this already. If not, just if you don't mind, I just go give you some cover basic, you know, what we do with budgets. Every year we do two budgets. It's explained for the newer commissioners who may or may not. No, we do two budgets, one for the state, IDOT, Department of Transportation, then another budget for the county. And the IDOT budget, because it goes with the state fiscal year, so it starts July 1. And then for the county's budget, the fiscal year starts January 1. And so we do one in the middle of the year and then another one, you know, for, you know, for the beginning of the year. And so this one is for the county budget, the fiscal year that FY26 starts January 1, 26. The, so this is a draft that have gone through the administration, some through the administration as well as the executive committee of the planning commission. And they both have, all bodies have approved or recommend approval of this document, this draft document. We cleaned up, you know, some minor typos and stuff with the, with the document after the approval of the, of the executive committee. As you may know, our funding sources basically is composed of grants, really the majority, and then some part from what we call the regional service agreements, you know, with contributions from the county, the state, the county, the city of Bloomington, as well as the town of Normal. And so for this, for this document, for the county, we call it the overall work program. Or the one that we do for the state, we call it the unified work program. And so the approval process, we've gone through two bodies already. And then yours is the third. And then with your approval, it would go to the county board and then the committee and then the whole process. And so we, if you look at the proposed budget for, for this upcoming fiscal year, 26, it's a little bit, you know, not probably 1.5, but 1.47, 7 million. And that's a drop of about 4.8%, 4.83% from last year, around about 1.55. And don't, don't be alarmed. That is primarily because being based, you know, on grants, right? I mean, it fluctuates. And so sometimes we got some grants done, sometimes we had new ones coming in, we never know. So that fluctuation, it doesn't mean that, hey, we are losing funding sources. It's just the way that the grants work, basically. And so while there's a drop of 4.83%, I wouldn't be alarmed, just the way it, it works. And, and so there's some works that, there's some grants being completed and the new grants that we anticipate in FY26 and some would be like continuation of what that, that we're doing. So that's kind of the gist of it. And you'll have some charts that we have prepared to make it a little bit easier to, to really understand our budget. So the one that's the large size, the larger size, 11 by 17, it kind of captures really the overall document, just money coming in, money we anticipate to spend. And thanks to Jen, who got put together, and then Katie, our Katie, the, the office manager kind of up together, along with, with Lou on the housing elements and just, just put these together, use, use it like a snapshot of what, what the overall budget, the, the, really the ins and outs, what the revenue and, and the expenditures. So that is supplemented by a couple of the charts that we have extracted, you know, from the document, a little bit enlarged and those two kind of explaining. Table 2.2, that's the budget, the different categories, the line item. And then the chart 2.1, you've got a pie chart showing how, how, how the, that the revenues break down from what source and then how much. And then so that makes up to that 1.7, 1.477 million. And with that, I'll be happy to ask the questions you may have.
Questions for me?
My only question I would have would be on your, on your final revenue source, your additional grants.
Yeah.
Those are the grants that you already have. Are those anticipated? 210?
210.
Additional grants, the final revenue source.
Yeah, yeah. The additional grants, that is the, that is the BCO, right?
The 210?
Yeah, under 210, but it says additional grants.
The regional service agreements, TVG is what?
That's the, that's the implementation one?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, then the 300 has this, the 210 is what's the seven?
Oh, that's the, isn't that the implementation grant for the? But that's, that's not the issue.
Yeah, but according to the chart, it's the right implementation grant.
Yeah. That's correct.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, okay, got it, yeah. That, that reminds me, that brings it back up. Yeah, it, it's the housing implementation grant because the amount, because we're doing this for one year, the, the grant amount from the state from BCO is for two years. That's why. Okay, I'll tell you something. $330,000, but divided by two, that's why we, yeah, that's that.
So that money is already assured again?
We, yeah, we've been awarded the money. We're still working with the state on the, on the paperwork, you know, the grant agreement, the budget allocation, and then we eventually have to do an RFP drive to people, but the grant, it's been awarded, yeah.
We just haven't received money yet.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So it was like other, other grants, it's awarded, don't worry, we start having the grant agreements done, and we start executing the grant agreement, then we ask for reimbursement when we spend the money, and that will be captured by the 160.
Other questions for me? If not, I entertain a motion to approve. Motion, thank you. Second? Thank you, partners. All those who favor this, if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. It is approved. We're now on to our presentation for today, which is the Go 6 for Clayton County Action Plan update for 2025. Great?
Yeah. Yeah, if I may, if I introduce our presenter today, just to background, if you recall back in March, believe, of this year, you all have approved a contract with the consultants to do this SS4A, which is an update to the 2021 Plan of Coast State Action Plan for Clayton County. And so since then, we have created a project steering committee. And then the, which represented from different organizations, the government, you know, some other agencies from the state, from like State Farm and from NWC, Health Department, your city, town, county. We had a number of people who helped on that, on that project in guiding and steering the process. And then with the help of the consultants and their subconsultants, Lockmuir Group is the lead consultant, and TY Lin is the subconsultant. And Heidi Thomas is the project manager slash project liaison to that project on behalf of the Lockmuir Group. And, but I would like to recognize, we don't see it now, but, but one of the committee, project steering committee members is joining us, I, I think, if you, I don't know if you can go back one, if you can show her face, or, or if you would like to show her face. But Jen, Jenny New, serves, represents the county health department, and she's joining us in, and I don't know, I cannot make, because it's a little bit far. Anybody else? Jen, Jen New, and who else? If, a few, oh, okay. Okay, all right. Yeah, so Jenny New, on behalf of the county health department is joining us, you know, we had a lot of time, meetings and input, along with many other members of the project steering committees. So after the presentation by Heidi, that's a good thing, have a general overview. But you all have also received, like, some of your, you read the draft documents that's been prepared by the consultants, and we have received comments. And also there were two public open houses that were held in August. We went to this project, we have received some comments, some feedback, and some have gone back to, or start making some changes. We have received some comments from even the project steering committee members, including comments from some of you, which we appreciate. And so we are at a stage of kind of winding down the project. This, as you recall, is a federal grant. And so by the end of September, the project will be done. And we are closing in to have the consultant to finish the project, the plan document, and also with the draft out, and then to be, you know, further refined, have a final plan document to the staff in, on the 10th of September, which means in like a week. So today, Heidi's going to give us the background, the overall coverage of that project. And then, and I have further comments, and looks for you. So please.
Thank you, and good afternoon, everybody. It's great, but Heidi, Heidi, and we're walking through the transportation consultant firm, and we were selected to do this project. And we, we, the large team also had a team from TY Lin who helped us along the way, too. I'm going to provide you a roughly 15-minute overview of a 100-page document that we prepared in, oh, about five months. So high-level overview, but feel free to ask questions, share commentary as, as you see fit. This project is funded by the Safe Streets and Roads for All Program, a federal discretionary program that the planning commission put in an application for and was selected. The project is to update the former 2021, the original plan. And in the update, it's to align with that SS4A framework, which comes in the structure of eight required elements, which will, which we will walk through today. And ultimately, the goal is to reduce, if not eliminate fatal and serious injuries on your roadway network here. We started in April with collecting data. Then we analyzed data, did public outreach and survey within the community and outside the community and the rural areas as well. Took that information, developed recommendations, compiled the entire process into a draft plan, which just ended its public review period. So we are buttoning that up. Any final comments that you received today into a final document, which we will turn over to the planning commission. So this has been a planning process throughout. And we'll have all of the requirements listed, one through eight, up here. That's the structure that we're aiming for. Vision zero, this is a required commitment by the government, governing body, which would be the commission here. And the steering committee, which we'll talk about, decided that the goal to reach zero fatalities and serious injuries should be by 2035. That's a goal. Everyone's going to work hard to achieve it because one life lost is too many. I will note that these numbers exclude the interstates and a piece of expressways, which are shown on the map here. And there are two reasons for that. One, the type of crashes on those particular facilities are pretty specific to their characteristics. Closed access, interchange is, they're just kind of different animals than a lot of the other roadways, most of which are under local jurisdiction. And secondly, those are IDOT roadways, like many of the others, but those are heavily influenced by the design standards, and there's not a lot of flexibility to make changes. So strategically, with the data, we pulled those out. So what does that goal look like? We have on the left, five years of historical data. These are people killed or seriously injured. The rolling average of those five years is 77. So looking ahead, including interim targets, a 20% reduction in 2027 would be a target of 62 or less. And a 50% reduction would be 39 in 2030, to lead us down to what we're trying to reach in 2035. And again, this excludes the interstate expressways. Of course, August 11th, IDOT rolled out its 2024 data, a little late in our process to analyze it, but we're sharing some of that data because this is an ongoing process and it's not going to stop with calendar years, fiscal years, anything of the sort. 2024, remember to match this map, was 66, which is a step in the right direction.
And that's in the entire county?
It's correct, excluding those three interstate and that.
Interstates, of course, correct.
Those were individuals. What we'll talk about here are total crashes and with that asterisk, excluding interstate and expressways. So just to get a feel for how many crashes do we have in Clayton County? It's 2,000 to 3,000 every year. Those are the bad ones down to the fender benders, the whole gamut. 2024, right on in the mix as it has been historically. If we break that apart a little bit, KSI is killed or seriously injured people in a crash. So we are talking crashes here. So these would be more or less the bad crashes, the ones that we are trying to prevent. On average, in the urban areas, we've had 46 in the region, 2024, so 41. And in the rural parts of the county, by definition, was an average of 19, and 2024 dropped by two. Same thing, pedestrian and bicycle fatal or serious injury crashes, average of seven per year. Or perhaps average of four bicyclists or bicycle crashes per year. And combining those together, that would be an average of 11. And in 2024, there were 14. Nationally, those vulnerable road user crashes, those who aren't protected by a car, those numbers just keep inching up, which is what we happen to see here on this number. And just as a note, all of the ped and bike crashes noted here were in the urban areas. They were not in the rural. Which one would it affect? You never know, people do write up in central town. And just looking at what types of crashes those are, the majority were fixed objects, which means you departed your travel lane where you should be on the roadway and you hit something. Fixed object. Angles, often at intersections, turning also often at intersections, and the same data, the ped bike. So you can see where 2024 may fall into those or not. So this is the data foundation from which we started to derive the plan and especially that goal. Ray mentioned the steering committee, which was comprised of these 12 entities. And we met with this committee monthly plus a couple more times to get their feedback, bounce ideas off of them, and have them guide the entire process. Number three is a robust safety analysis. So we took the existing conditions, the data. We looked at that from a geographic standpoint, from severity and crash type, which we just didn't overview of, and also contributing factors, what leads into that. We took that and turned that into two high injury networks, one for rural and one for urban, because they are different entities. So we don't really want to mesh those together and consider them the same. The high injury network is something we'll talk about later, so keep it in mind. It's a visualization tool. It identifies the areas where we have the higher rates of those crashes, where we're having people getting hurt. And we did mathematical calculations to figure out which ones are more important or dangerous for that. The rural high injury network accounted for 250 roadway miles. So after we did the analysis, this is the top 20% of those safety index scores that we calculated, 250 miles. On the urban side, same analysis, but looking at just the urban areas together, we had 100 miles of roadway that accounted for the top 20% of those safety scores. And we will talk about these maps a little bit later, so just please don't forget them for the next five minutes. Requirement number four was engagement. The first part of the process was to get the public's feedback on what are, what are your needs? What do you think the problems are? We wanted to hear from them. We did a public survey, and we also had on the right here, an interactive map where participants could mark an intersection they felt was bad, or ping a spot where they really wanted a sidewalk to get to their kid's school or get to a park. Obtained a lot of comments there. We had that open for about a month. All in all, 31 additional comments were submitted, where people put in their thoughts on this map. For the actual survey, 276 responses were received from the public. We also went out to the public to talk to people with a variety of engagement events. We did two harvest markets, one right here, and then one where we went out to Eroy. And the more rural setting, that right here. And the planning commission promoted the plan also at the county fair. In central Illinois weather, you canceled our other open street event in Normal, which we were looking forward to attending, but we all live here, we know what the weather's like. But our engagement was, was successful. We did get to talk to a lot of people in person. Additionally, we did stakeholder interviews with the four key groups identified here. Those were virtual, a conversation with these groups to just extract that same information. What are the problems and needs from your, your area, your perspective? Because everyone's needs are different. And the piece that we're, we just wrapped up now is the public release of that plan. Get the public's feedback on what they think about the whole plan, but in particular, the recommendations. We asked about the problems and needs earlier, gain the feedback on the result. And that commentary just ended on August 24. In conjunction with that review period, we also held two open houses in August, one at the Bloomington Library, and then the other a week later at the county library department. Another requirement is to conduct a policy and process review. And this is where TY Lin led the show here. And talk to the local agencies about what policies do you have or do you not have? And identify what they saw as gaps, barriers, or opportunities to make improvements to reach that vision zero goal. Collectively, the end result needed to be a comprehensive list of projects and strategies. Not everything leads to construction. We have our set of projects and strategies into three groups, and we'll talk about those recommendations in the three groups. The first is priority locations. Where can we do a project that would have a strong impact? Group B is systemic improvements. Where can we, where do we know the risk is that we can try to mitigate that risk before a crash happens? Which is different than, we know crashes are happening at any of those locations, but what can we do? And the third is that policy improvement element of it. So if we talk about group A, we go back to those high injury network maps, the top 20% of our safety scores. We took those locations in working with the steering committee. They identified the criteria listed here below and debated and came with these, with the ratings that we listed here. So each project location got a score, and we took that and developed what we call the priority list. We're showing you graphically here, the top 11 rural locations, because there's 10A and a 10B, and then the top urban locations. For, within the plan for each location, each of these top priorities, receipt pages like this, where the existing conditions are discussed, the amount of killed and serious injury crashes, what are the contributing factors? But very importantly, what are the potential improvements that could be done here on a short term and a long term? The same, if not, similar, if not the same, information is provided for all of those urban locations as well within the plan. But we have more than 20 priorities. Those are just the top ones. All of the other locations on that high injury network, both urban and rural, are listed in the plan. So they're not forgotten. And this plan is to be a living document and priorities change over time. So we don't want restriction to just that 20. We want focus on that entire high injury network to live on. So the remaining 200 So the remaining two hundred and fifty miles of locations are identified in the plan too. I think, can you go back the slide for me? I don't know how to use my mouse. Oh, maybe hit escape and then back. Thank you. That one. For the systemic areas, we had two groupings of strategies. If you could get it in a presentation mode, that'd be great. Do I have to do it? Dang it, I told, I stuck your, told you, stole your mouse, didn't I? We had two groupings, systemic areas by roadway characteristic and by crash type. So for each of these shown in the black boxes, we had a set of strategies that could be implemented systemically across the board on every perhaps multimodal facility in that area. That would work towards reducing those fatal and serious injury crashes. Oh, right now I'm really going the wrong way. There we go. And the conclusion of the policy assessment were seven policy goals. And for each of these goals, there's a series of objectives that detail the framework of what the planning commission and its partner agencies can do to work towards reaching vision zero. Collectively, there are twenty-one strategies under these seven umbrellas that are captured in the plan. Requirement seven, we call performance management. We don't want to have a paper document that just says, we want it to live on, we want it to be active. We want to see if it's working. So the Go Safe Task Force was established as guided by the steering committee. And its framework is pretty similar to the steering committee. But that task force will be charged with collecting and assessing data on an annual basis. And that's what that group decided was best, annual basis. Determine the status of recommendations. Have, has progress been made? Have we made construction? Have we implemented new policies? Are we making it happen? And produce an annual report, a document that will be user reader friendly, that can be generated and shared to the public to keep the Go Safe concept alive. This task force can also update the plan when it's needed, if it's needed. They can make modifications to it. A plan does not need to wait another four or five years to be updated. If the planning commission decides it's time to pull the data and do an update, the task force can be that charged. Number eight is timing. Assuming that the planning commission will want to apply for SS four A implementation funds and FY twenty-six, the next round, this plan needs to be updated or completed within a certain window. We anticipate that will be by June first or thirtieth next year. Planning commission will be well within that window, so that's pretty much a minor check mark at this point to apply for future funding. There is one additional element we included as part of this plan and that is a safety toolkit. It is a lot menu of safety proven countermeasures that can be used to positively impact safety. And here's a sample page that just describes at a high level of what these countermeasures are and where they could be applied. A lot of our recommendations from the plan, if not all of them, tie back to this toolkit and additional information. And forty measures were identified in the toolkit. Here is what six pages of the plan looks like. And I have a half a hard copy of the plan here with me today. I didn't peel the whole tree when I printed that one off. So what's next? We have a plan. It's about finalized. Ray's intent is to schedule a special meeting with this group in order to do two things. One, adopt the plan and embedded within that plan is the vision zero target of reaching zero fatalities and serious injuries by twenty thirty-five. So twofold pieces of adoption for this. That concludes my, I'm a little over time, high level overview of the plan and the process that was taken to get to the final plan.
Questions for?
Absolutely.
Heidi?
I have questions. In the data that you analyzed, what, what were the top three strong correlations that you developed? From that data?
Plan. I don't have them memorized in the top of my, of my head.
Okay.
Analysis page. And I don't, Peter Williams, my counterpart.
And how strong were the correlations, you know?
Oh, gosh.
You can answer that separately.
Different ways to answer, to answer that.
What I'm getting at is, what were the root causes? And, and is there a pattern? Is that, are there, you know, are there a top three that stick out so that we can focus our plan on? Because if we're going to get to zero, we have to focus on those. That's, that's all I'm asking.
No, that's a, that's a good question. And there's not a straight definitive answer for that.
Okay.
Because we look at numbers, which we, we looked at the crash data. We looked at the risks, which is based on the characteristics of the roadway and then the non-roadway items too. And then we have the people element too. We can't really control the people and what they do and the decisions they make. We can best design roadways for them or best educate, but we also can't control. So the recommendations and the prioritization pull all those pieces together. But within the plan, there are more details, more substance to that. Just as an example, I happen to be looking at, I don't know what picture I'm looking at here. Within the crash analysis, so contributing factors that led to those fixed object crashes, where someone didn't stay in their lane and they got a course. Twenty-four point four percent were, for the crash report, failing to reduce speed to avoid a crash. Twenty percent were improper lane usage and seventeen percent were other than the influence of drugs or alcohol for those crash types. We do similar thing. We looked at the angle only crashes. So probably our urban areas, also the rural too. Twenty-four percent were disregarding stop sign. Just shy of twenty were failure to yield. And similarly, almost eighteen percent were disregarding traffic signals. So that's where the contributing factor piece was brought into the puzzle. And then all those factors trickle down into the smaller categories too. And that information comes from a crash report. And that data is filled out to the best of the ability or knowledge or time from, from the officer. And that's the large data set that we work with.
You, you did not include bicycle like constitution trail in this, did you?
In terms of?
For bicycle and pedestrian?
If we?
Because this is, this is for roadways only, right?
Well, crash data, I don't recall it. I have to check with Peter. I don't, if a crash occurred on the trail only, I don't think that would result in a crash report.
Right.
If someone were cross, crossing along the trail across the roadway and happened to hit with cars, that would result in a crash report.
Got it.
That's the data element only, but the problems and needs that we got from the community and the steering committee and the surveys, where are your needs? Where do we need a bike trail to get people off of the road and to the park, to the school, to my neighbor, right neighbor?
Yeah, because it's, they're putting themselves at great risk in that roadway.
Yeah.
Heidi, I don't know if this is a question for you or Ray in general, but obviously where crashes tend to get the most news is when they happen around the ISU campus, especially with pedestrian and cars and such. Is any of this being tied back to what ISU is doing? Or is this helpful for ISU in terms of them being able to do things to make their campus safe?
Sure. If it would help, can somebody go back, show that picture, the high injury network for urban? That might be useful. But to, to answer your question, the currently, as some of you might know, ISU and Town Normal working together on a campus safety, transportation safety plan for the campus, they got state grants to work on that. In fact, they might have started, because the school started, they did a lot of campaign promotion, public safety survey, what they call pop-ups, you know, to cut temporary, they to encourage people's attention on, on safety. And the Town Normal's engineering, director of public works in engineering, also serves on the PSC for this project. So yeah, he provides input along the way during the meetings. And so in that sense, we kind of tie together, but we, they have their own mechanism. We have our mechanism. We don't work together in that way. But the, the Town Normal representatives kind of serves on both. And then so when they see certain issues or network or locations that warrant attention that's, you know, got incorporated into the overall plan for our project. Yeah. Because that, for the ISU project is still just ongoing, so they're doing a lot of campaigning, publicity. So they're not really done done yet.
I would also add that this analysis of the whole county confirmed that, I'm sorry, the problem areas too. Yeah.
Yeah, well, that's where, yeah, that's the concentration. Yeah.
Other questions for Heidi? Mark?
Yeah, I, just so you know my background, I used to work for Farnsworth.
Okay.
And so I know enough to be dangerous, man.
Are you a planner and engineer or a plan engineer?
I was an engineer. And so anyways, my question for you is, the next step on a lot of this will be construction, I would assume, some sort. Whether or not it's major construction or, you know, ancillary funding for that. Where is that? Is that already in the planning? Or where is the funding for that coming from? Especially if you've only got, you know, ten years to get this done. Sometimes projects take four or five years.
Not more. I'm going to go to my former position, which was Federal Highway for my entire career. So this was a federal highway program and funding sources. So I get that question. We talked about implementation applications for the last cycle of SS four A. That is one funding source with pretty much one shot left unless that program continues on or is, or is renewed. Although this plan was developed around SS four A structure, it is to be used above and beyond that to inform transportation decision-making, seeking of funding sources, alternative funding sources, creative funding sources beyond just SS four A. So we can go to the federal programs that are funneled through I G A, like safe routes to school, the transportation alternatives program, which is like trails, the sidewalks or any other funding sources that I can't think of. Private sources or incorporated when you have a new development, change your procedure so that developer is required to put in a shared use path or a bicycle facility. There's no singular plan on funding source. Remains applying for FY twenty-six SS four A for a strong implementation project would highly recommend it. But this plan is to be above and beyond just that program. Do we have a list of fantastic funding sources just ready to be grabbed by all the communities? Not necessarily, but this will help inform decisions. And even on those twenty projects, get an idea of what kind of improvements would be needed to be implemented to make that change. Maybe it's not full-blown reconstruction. Maybe it's just restricting or some very specified single operate, more low-cost safety improvements. Emphasis on the lower cost.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Heidi? Ray?
Yeah, so you've seen a wonderful presentation for Heidi, as one of the slides indicated. We're hoping to schedule a meeting for your consideration of adoption of this plan update. And we considering, after consulting with the chair, we could, considering September twenty-fourth, I will be emailing you all just to call to make sure that works for you all. There's a Wednesday, I think three weeks from today. If it's a phone call or a certain time, that works for you all and hopefully. And that also would kind of, we try to move the October meeting to that day. So there won't be an October meeting. So instead have a special meeting on September twenty-fourth for that. So hopefully it works out. And so I'll be calling you all and next day or so, just keep it in mind. So we, with that, if, if the plan gets approved and adopted by you all, then we will present that to the FHWA and complete the, the plan documents and, and the project by September thirtieth, which is the deadline for the plan documents. Of course, there's like money and other things. It won't stop to September thirtieth. But so I, I'll be calling the, the planning commission members for that. Just for sake, anybody that, that is a no-no? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you for your time, everybody.
Thank you very much.
Missed that too.
Yes.
Ray, we're on to the housing coordinator position.
Yeah, that's kind of related to the question earlier. As I indicated on the budget, I've got this, this state grant on the housing coordinator position. So what you saw, the budget was half of, of that grant. And it's not the full grant because actually there's local measures provided by C E O Bloomington and Town Normal. So we were finalizing on the, on the grant agreement with the state. There's some bunch of things to be worked out. And after that, then we will be issuing the, the R M P for, for to fill the position. So, yeah, so next year, with the budget, that will be the second half. So what you saw on this is the other first half of that project. So that's, that's my update for, for that.
Questions, Ray? The regional housing initiatives, Luke?
Afternoon, everyone. For the local updates, MCRPC facilitated the August Housing Staff Committee meeting last week. And we will also be facilitating the Affordable and Supported Housing or the ASH Committee meeting on September fifteenth, Monday. And in relation to that, we are developing a new white paper analyzing the changes in housing units, vacancy rates, housing and populated, households and population and median income in Acquaint County. For other updates, MCRPC attended the Housing Coalition meeting two weeks ago. During this meeting, the coalition discussed its immediate, short-term, one-year and three-year goals. During this meeting, we also rather policy, technology and front door work groups were established. MCRPC also attended the unhoused task force last week, where we discussed street outreach updates and alternative housing solutions specifically called weather response. We also attended a webinar on zoning strategies and tools to unlock housing supply across the Midwest. And this webinar, some of the best practices include changes in zoning regulations, specifically reducing minimum block width to, to allow other housing units other than single-family homes to be built. And then also reducing rent tape to encourage more developments. But ultimately, they recommended that the most important step is to actually build more houses and involve developers in, and other entities involved in housing development. Those are the updates that I have. Now any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jennifer, the Human Services Transportation Plan update?
Good afternoon, everyone. As we previously noted, the next regional committee meeting, which is the Technical and Policy Committees for Region Six for Human Services Transportation Planning Process, is scheduled for September fifteenth, ten thirty noon at the Williamson County Historic Courthouse in Pontiac, which we've been using for seven years. In preparation for that meeting and for the ongoing management of the services we provide to Region Six. In preparation for that meeting and for the ongoing management of the services we provide to Region Six, Thomas Valencia, our assistant planner here by the computer, has created an information dashboard draft essentially regarding Region Six services and key destinations in each county for various purposes. Healthcare is one of them, there are some others. And the idea is that the draft for wherever it's at, when we hit the 15th, will be demonstrated, I think it was on September 15th meeting. You know, we will ask the participants in the committees to essentially tell us what my message, there are other aspects of their communities that they want us to showcase or refer to. That would be part of that meeting. On August 26th, IDOT hosted a meeting with the Region Six service provider team, organizations that actually provide transportation services. And IDOT staff, they were about a half of us, but IDOT people there. And the regional coordinator also was me. So the idea was to try and get, you know, sort of ahead of the September meeting, to try and get everybody acquainted. And we sort of made a start on that and answered some questions and made sure that everyone knew who was in what slot. Two of the three current providers were present for this, including Connect Transit, Transit, sorry, and Showbus, Connect of course is our rural service here in McLean County. Showbus continues to serve Livingston County, Yeracun County, and Kenton County. So we will see what turns up at the meeting in September. We will be making a push to ensure that all of these service providers are present. Absolutely, questions? That's where we are.
Okay, other questions for Jennifer? Thank you very much, Jennifer. Ray, you're going to talk about the Veterans Parkway Corridor planning update?
Yeah, very quick, there was a project steering committee meeting of the state. And it's, they're still, the consultants still working on different analysis. They're working the steering committee and their own consultants. So they are actually canceling the meeting for September. So they have more time, you know, to keep working on the analysis. Has up, there'll be two public open houses going to be held in early November. When we have more details, we'll let you know. So they're working on all these different analysis and then working with IDOT. And then to have some alternatives and try to get public input in early November. So just, that's the latest questions.
Finally, the Strategic Land Use Plan, Anthony?
Got a quick presentation, nothing too long, just a few informational items here. Okay, so we just closed out our first round of public outreach for the Strategic Land Use Plan. That started on June 23rd and ended September 1st, just a few days ago. Right now, we're currently in between outreach phase one and two, and that's September 2025 development of the revised second draft. So that's what we're working on now. The first public comment phase that just concluded included five public open house meetings hosted by MCRPC and attended by local government staff, where we presented information that's similar to a presentation we had last month, and collected feedback on the first draft. This also included presentations and a request for comment from additional stakeholders. That included the McLean County Township Supervisors, the McLean County Township Highway Commissioners, the McLean County Mayor's Association members, McLean County Farm Bureau, Bloomington Normal Economic Development Council Board, and representatives from rural municipalities in McLean County. During that first round of outreach, we collected valuable public comments that we could use to help guide the revision of the second draft. We're now in that process, incorporating all of those comments and hopefully presenting a revised draft in mid to late September. Included in that draft, we intend on incorporating an outreach report that outlines all of our outreach efforts, public comments received, and the resulting updates to the plan. Once that second draft is released, there'll be another, an additional 30-day public comment period where we can collect any additional public comment. We are also planning on doing two more public outreach events for that second draft. We haven't figured out the dates for those yet, but once we do, we'll post them. After that second round of public comment, we'll consider any additional comments received and incorporate them into the final draft. We anticipate having that final draft available by the end of October. And at that point, any of the local governments in McLean County that wish to adopt the plan will then take it to their review and approval process. Had some stats about some of the comments that we received, if you'd like to hear those.
Yeah, please, I was going to ask you about the general sense of what, what the comments were leading to.
Yeah, so over the five open house events, we had roughly 75 people attend. We had sign-in sheets, not everybody signed in. But based off of the head count, we had roughly 75, 80 people. We received 83 online comments and then five written comments submitted at those open houses and seven comments submitted via email. Total of 95 to 100 comments on this first draft. The number one comment we received, kind of a tie, so I guess two number one comments, is the inclusion of the Eastside Highway and the industrial land use, the southeast side of Bloomington. Those seem to be the two most talked about content pieces of this plan. That's all I've got, any questions?
Any other questions for Anthony or Ray? Thank you very much, appreciate you. Is there anything else that needs to come before the commission today? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. So, second? All those favors signify the saying, same song, we stand adjourned. Thank you.